I'd like to call the meeting in the order in the absence of President Cross. And I would like somebody, I would entertain a motion to appoint an acting president for the committee of the whole meeting.
Make a motion that trustee Heck become the acting mayor tonight.
Motion by trustee Jones, I need a second.
Second.
And we have a second. Let's do a roll call.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Mr. Huckey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Trustee Heck, if you would come forward and take the main chair and run the meeting from this point, I would appreciate it. So hey, good luck, I'll see ya.
Where are we, on three? Trustees in your packets, you got the...
We haven't done a roll call.
Oh.
Let's do a roll call. Okay. Mr. Huckey?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. March?
Mr. Ham?
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mr. Heck?
Here. In your packets, you got the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting for August 22nd. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Huckey, second. And by...
Second.
Trustee Bowden.
Mr. Huckey?
I stand corrected, present. I wasn't here at the last meeting. I'm sorry.
Well, Mr. Jones wasn't either, so we're gonna have a problem. Stick in motion. They just can't, they just can't. Became real early. The board doesn't start...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's files and minutes, approve all minutes. You don't have to have been here in order to vote. You can vote on the minutes. It's normally best to, you know, stay in if you aren't here, there's no reason to vote, but there's no legal reason you cannot. So for short, I would just go ahead.
Make a motion.
Yes.
You can make a motion.
That's also true, you can always make the motion.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Heck?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Public comment, I think that was what Mr. Oliver was here for, I'll come back to that.
Okay.
State of the comment for this.
We're supposed to be here at six, so let's move forward.
We'll move on to replacement of computers.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a discussion tonight. I've got the quote from Duratec, the main computer system upstairs, the server, the desktops, and of course, we just did the email exchange, are very antiquated, and we haven't done anything with them in a while. So we got a quote to do the whole thing with an internal server, battery backups, new desktops, screens, everything for the people upstairs, especially where we're running cash, which is very important. And that would, it comes out to a total of 99.39. And then our proposal, I talked to Marcy, and our proposal would be that we would split that up between some different departments that are active in that. And we have plenty of money in the budget to do it, and we're going to, we'd like to proceed with that. So I'll have those over in my office if anybody wants to stop and take a look at them. I don't want them in the street, obviously, it's important, but if you want to stop and take a look at them. We only did the one because they've done, they got our exchange server, they, they're under $10,000, they're, you know, and they, they did, they've actually rescued us a couple of times on our server already, and it's not, they're not even in, on the server yet, so...
Who do we deal with?
Duratec out of Nantino. And they do a good job, and their techs are pretty good, so...
What operating systems are you going to?
It's going to be the Windows 10.
Windows 10?
Yeah. And it's the Microsoft Office 2016, so we're gonna...
Cool.
We'll be right up there with the latest. Some of the Microsoft, I have Microsoft 7. I think my business one is 7 on mine, and we've got some older ones, too. So we're gonna all come up to the new Microsoft and have working computers, so...
How many is that?
We got two in the front, we've got Donna, we've got Marcy, we've got myself, and then we're looking at, hopefully, extending one to the mayor on that, too. He doesn't use it very often, but we will have, actually, what we're gonna do is take one of the older ones, and probably mine, and put it back in that office there. And so he has one, if he wants one. I mean, it'll be there. Well, we're gonna keep one of them anyway, because you never know, if we have one go down, we have a screen go down, a keyboard go down, whatever, we're gonna keep one or two. And then the rest of them, we'll bring to you guys for disposal ordinance and go from there.
When you make an investment like this, what's anticipated, like the annual service?
Probably five years. Nets outside with the way things are, you know, now. So they change, I mean, it's just more or less operating systems, and then when they come out with a new operating system, if you don't have the proper stuff inside your desktop, you can't run it properly, it jams up, it goes real slow, and we just have those kind of problems, so... There are certain points of the day where we're just running, I mean, we can run the information to you faster than we can send it to you, so, but this'll help, so...
You said...
And more capacity, that's the biggest part of it, is more capacity.
You said it was all budgeted for.
It's all budgeted for.
Yeah. Of course. Sounds good.
So, like I said, I'll bring it back the next meeting, I just didn't get it out there tonight, and if anybody's got any questions, if not, I'll bring it back this meeting, so...
Any other comments or questions on the... Any other comments on the questions or... Any other comments or questions? I'm the replacement of the computer, you see, turn me off. If not, we'll move on to item seven, discussion regarding the tree ordinance revisions. I don't know if you want to talk about it a little bit, Mike, but we've, trustee March and trustee Jones have put some time into redoing the tree ordinance. We made a few changes at the last public works meeting. I think it's gone to legal now.
Yeah, I shipped it over to legal to make sure that we were within our bounds as far as home rule and non-home rule.
Yeah, you are non-home rule, so you are limited in the sense that we have to have authority somewhere in general to do what we're gonna do. But I think everything looked okay to me, that really for non-home rule, we have authority on the diseases, there's no question there on the ashbore, and you won't control that. There may be some more questions generally about unsafe trees on private property that aren't, you know, falling over a public road or something. I mean, if it's clearly endangering public, we'll be okay. So I didn't have too much trouble with that. I had a couple of questions, I, you know, I put some stuff in there that we'd have to do, but the big one that I wanted to start out with over here was, we've already got trees and shrubs covered by the code, and I put that section in, I don't know if you've all looked at it, you know, I'm sorry, what we've already got in there? It's 98. And of course, what we wanna do there is, do we want another standalone ordinance, or do you wanna just put, you know, some of the stuff that you've got in the new ordinance into the code? If we have a standalone ordinance, we gotta make sure that it doesn't conflict with the code. And then there's a couple of things in the code that are just maybe a little question in terms of the new ordinance. For example, what authority is the tree board gonna really have? The tree board's gonna be the public works committee, okay? So then you had a question of, well, okay, now the public works committee is also the tree board. Do we need to have something called the tree board for purpose? I thought I, you know, saw trustee March say something about maybe it would get us something, but I wasn't sure what that was, but if there isn't, then the question would be, well, just assign trees to the...
I think the biggest reason he wanted to create the tree board was, that was one of the things that Trees USA wanted, it was one of their requirements.
So if we had a tree board, then, I thought I remember something, well, we can do that without any trouble, and the way that it's done is obvious, just this is the public works committee. I did, when I did a little revision, I did also put the, you know, director of public services in there, because our current ordinance has the director of public service in charge of a lot of this stuff, so I think that person should definitely be on the tree board, too, if they're not on the, if they're not on the public works committee, which I don't think they are.
I don't think they're on the committee, but he will be our, hopefully, he'll be our arborist.
Cause our arborist would be there, too. But that's one question we have to address. Do we want a separate standalone ordinance? Is that a good thing for the Tree USA case? Because we certainly could have it, or do we wanna just put the stuff from the proposed tree ordinance that's new into our, into our code? So that's a question we need to address. And I, that, the other one I already did, that was to, we really want the tree board for, we know that, if we, we gotta make sure it's in a code, code with our current ones. And then, the one thing that I saw in the draft, it says that the tree board, this is what it said, applicability. The ordinance provides full power and authority over all trees, plants, shrubs located within the street lights away and parks in place in city, and over trees, plants, and shrubs located on private property that constitute a hazard. All right, full power and authority, the grants provide full power and authority, to who?
The tree board.
Well, it doesn't say that, Mike, look, look at what it says. And then, then my question would be, okay, if the tree board's got full power and authority over in our code, we've got the, you know, the department had with a lot of authority to, you know, to do stuff. And then one of the things I said, and I put in here, I put in the draft for you to look at, was the authority to, and I, of course, use the village administrator, which would be typical, because no matter what, you know, if you've got the tree board and you're deciding something, they've gotta order somebody to do something. And that, I also like the one where no people would interfere with the tree board. I know what you mean. That means when the tree board says to the public works, go hunt out there and cut down the tree, nobody can interfere with that. I don't think you were talking about the tree board gonna run out there and plant the shrubs and, you know what I'm saying, I respect that one. I get kinda crazy like that one from a while. But I have authority of the administrator in there, because somebody has got to carry out what the tree board, you know, says. And that's gotta either be our director or the manager. I mean, it's certainly logical.
I'd really prefer it to be the director.
Yeah.
As long as we say the director, that would be...
That would be Bob.
Okay.
Yeah, it's my...
Hopefully, he's the arborist, and that probably covers both things, you know.
Right.
That would make more sense, cause I would go to him anyway.
Yeah, see now, so the board says something, now who in the village has got the authority to order the people, or order either our own people or somebody, to go do what it is that the board says? I don't really think, and I wouldn't advise that you do it, you don't want the board ordering, I mean, the board, it's like your board, you don't really send out orders to the, you tell the chief what to do, and the chief orders the police, same, it would be the same thing, you wanna do that. So I had a couple of ideas there, but the first one, you know, just as to how to do it, and I was thinking, maybe you do want the standalone ordinance for the purpose of sending it somewhere or something like that, but that's one of the questions, do we have a standalone, or do we just put it into our code? And Greg, I mean, you know, it's always nice to have everything in the code.
Add, well, yeah, once it's kind of right, and send a book.
And I don't wanna rewrite this, I think what they were aiming for was just to clean it up and freshen it up, so I think, I would like to just see us add some of this into...
Into what we've got in the code? I like that idea, too, as long as it accomplishes what you, the purpose that you have for wanting to have the tree ordinance in the first place.
Well, I think the purpose of it is, we're just trying to garner some enthusiasm with some definitive parameters on what we wanna do, not only now, but on an ongoing basis. And we wanna meet qualifications of being a tree city, all that kind of stuff. But not just stuff that's in there that kinda gets done with specific parameters of, you know, someone, this needs to be, here it is.
Well, I agree that, and I put that in the note here, the proposed new ordinance does have some important provisions that we should, should add, should be added. I didn't check the subdivision control, and it's very thoroughly to see what we have there, but I'm sure we do have a lot of standards in there when somebody's doing something. But for example, of your spacing in this ordinance, we actually set it out. We don't have a spacing kind of ordinance for existing streets and quote-unquote parkways. I don't know if we have any place designated parkways, but we have a definition for it, so...
I think that's in like subdivision or something with the spacing for the trees?
Trees, yeah, when you have a new subdivision, but see, Donna, that'll only apply when you set out the new subdivision. It doesn't really have applicability to the old areas that are not, you know, subject to, you know, a development or subdivision code when it was, when it was done. So it's probably a good idea to, you know, have that, the spacing and all that. I put some definitions in there, like you had, I put a definition for a small tree and a definition for a big tree. Normally, that's 25 feet, because small trees are 25 feet and below, and that's got to do with the wires and all, and the rest of that.
And we've got lists, Kevin's putting that together for the small trees, the big trees.
Yeah, and you should have lists, that's a good idea, too.
Yeah, they're working on that.
Yeah.
Well, that was another thing, too, and the head of public works told us that if some disease came right now, it would wipe out 70% of the trees in the village and the parkway. So part of the tree board would be to have this diversity of trees, so...
Not planting all the same way.
Right, and you've got that control to, to see that that kind of thing happens, and you can see that people can't just go out and chop a tree down.
Yeah, well, they couldn't, they're not supposed to do that anyway, but you're right, pretty sure.
Yeah, and just, just so we can maintain a real, real good tree program, that's the purpose of the whole thing.
Yeah, I understand.
But before we make any decision, I would like Dr. March to be here, cause he's the one that...
I just wanted to get that to these guys, so they could start looking at the legal aspects of it, and there's still a list to be made, and so there's a little bit more work to go on this, but just wanted to get the ball rolling, I didn't want it to sit, so...
And a lot of this that he put together was from ordinances from other communities.
Yeah, we've done them, I mean, I've done them, we've got a real big one in Lombard that we did, and a couple of the other bigger areas that I've already done that I can, I can look at, too. But I think generally, the main thing is deciding, okay, do we want it in the code? I think it's a good idea to put it in the code, because I think, as Greg will tell you, when you have special ordinances, whatever, they're, they're at the end, then you've gotta kinda try to figure out, oh, wait a second, is there anything in the code that I've gotta sit this next to and look at the code? It's better if it's all right there, but that, again, would be up to you, and then we would just take our current code section, in which we have, it's titled line section 98, and just put in the tree board, put in...
Link amendments.
A whole bunch of amendments to pick up most of these, most of the provisions. And I, and I do think we should have a provision in there, a little bit about, okay, the tree board orders something, then the director of public works or the village administrator, one or the other, or both, are supposed to carry it out, make sure it's done.
I think we kind of assumed that that's why it would be not just the board.
I know.
So is this tree board gonna be planting trees?
Well, it, they, actually, there's nothing in the proposal that gives it final authority to order that, it makes the recommendation to the village board.
The village, is the village in any way, shape, or form gonna be planting any type of trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're kinda hoping that...
No, so that would be the idea.
You know, we get a little synergy going, and maybe we have some people in the committee there.
I have a worksheet that I printed out for costs, because nobody's talking much about costs here, and I would like to speak about that a little bit. You know, tree planting, initial care, community, the community management, tree removals, volunteer time, there's several things on here. Our population, I, I don't know who to give this to, if you can look this over to you, to you, who wants this?
I can take it for committee.
But the thing I would like to say here about the tree ordinance discussion is, while I appreciate the enthusiasm of trustee March that he has for this project and the effort he's put forward, I have some serious concerns pertaining to this project. There's some great guidelines for Arbor Day. I've been an Arbor Day member for probably 14 years now, and I mean, it's, it's a nice, nice organization. But, you know, for us to continue this, but with that being said, A, I believe it's gonna be putting a heavier burden on our seniors that are already on a fixed income, along with those that are on disability payments, and the unemployed. There's also those that live payday to payday, myself just being an average person. I know I would have to, be difficult for me to pay for a 50-foot tree to be cut down. This is in reference to the not less than $100 fine and not to exceed $750 for each separate offense. A separate offense shall be deemed committed for each day during or on a violation occurs or continues. Are you telling me as a board, all you, all the board members, we're gonna charge our residents $750 a day? I'm not. B, the cost for this program is two dollars per capita, which we have, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Clerk, 41, 42?
41, 42.
That's a cost of $8,284 plus the annual Arbor Day celebration, record-keeping, manpower, that could all be somewhere anywhere between $10,000 and $15,000 per year, and I just believe that these tax dollars could be spent elsewhere for better use. Now, for the lack of the official certification, that shouldn't prevent Piattone from taking good care of its trees. It also doesn't mean we can't incorporate some of those good ideas.
So can you sum that up for me, cause I kinda lost? What are you, what are you saying?
Concerned about the cost.
The cost for planting new trees by the village?
The total cost for this program.
But specifically what?
This is in reference to last...
Specifically, excuse me, specifically, we talked about the village planting new trees to replace all the diseased trees in the village that's been in the budgeted.
Right, now...
And that budget was approved last summer.
In the ordinance, in the ordinance, if you read the ordinance, this says, it's in reference to, I'm concerned about the fines. How are you gonna charge $750 a day? That's what it says in here, 750 for each separate offense. A separate offense shall be deemed committed for each day during or on which a violation occurs or continues.
So that's your concern, is the fines?
Yes.
So you don't mind planting trees?
No!
Oh, okay, good, I just wanted to get that clear.
No, that, that's, that's...
So we take the fines out, then you're good.
If, we're already budgeted for it, for this.
Okay.
I'm concerned about these fines.
Okay.
You going in somebody's backyard and saying, the other thing, you've got 60 days to take that tree down, you don't take it down, we're gonna take it down. We're gonna hit with a fine and the cost. There shouldn't be any fines.
Okay.
You wanna take the tree down with the permission, that's fine, and if they don't have the money to pay, then we put, then you put a lien on the property. That's my concerns.
But you, you're okay with planting trees?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood, cause I wasn't sure where you were going with that.
Yes.
How would legal address that situation?
Well, I was gonna say, one, the current penalty in the ordinance on trees is the same thing, it reads the same way, and the fact that it does say it doesn't mean...
But it says it.
I understand.
It says that in all our... But it says it.
Right, it's an existing, it's a, it's an existing ordinance today.
Yeah. You need to remove it, then.
Right, right, that's, that's what I was gonna say, it's, it's just there, probably for, I don't think any prosecutor, us, or Canute, or anybody, would ever recommend that we ever, ever really do that.
It gives you a starting point and an ending point, if you have to go out on all of our codes, and that's, the $100 and the 750 a day is all of our codes that say that, by the way. And we very rarely do that, but if we have a problem situation, and not necessarily trees, but we have a problem situation that we have to deal with, and we start popping on $750 a day, trust me, this starts getting more attention. Now, I don't know that you wanna do that with a dead tree, I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, is that we have that in all our codes now, so that's not, that's not new language. And I, if we remove it from there, and my question legally would be, if we remove it from there, are we culpable to remove it from all our fines?
Well, that, that would be, the answer to that would be no.
Okay, that's why...
We can have separate fine amounts for various offenses. The thing I was, that 30 in 60 days was interesting to me, too, because I think this ordinance had, the draft had 30, and I rolled it back to 60, because that's clearly, you've gotta, you've gotta watch that, and you've gotta give people time to comply. The other, and you do, we do have a compliance ticket procedure chief in, in tree ordinance already, so they can come in and, you know, settle it, settle it ahead of time, which I also think is a very good idea with, with trees. You don't really wanna have to go to court with people on trees. The one thing I will say, though, is with the Emerald Ashbore and the Elm, if that's there and it's bad, you know, it's important to get that out. So that would be an important thing, you know, if somebody has infected trees or two on their property, that, that can infect the other trees, and so you do wanna be able to move fairly, fairly quickly with that, or, you know, require them to do it. But I think, I think it's 60 days in the statute, we have a statutory law that allows us to do this with Emerald Ashbore and, and whatever the...
Dutch Elm.
Dutch Elm, there's this long Latin word for that that I can't pronounce, Greg, I don't know.
I couldn't either, you're a lawyer, you took more Latin than I do.
Yeah, I did one year, but it's like that, you know.
I think we'll take this back to another committee meeting in October, and we'll try to clean it up and get it back to you and...
Yeah, just let it, let me know, and I'll...
Before the board.
I think if I, if I had a recommendation, and this is just from the outside looking in, as the administrator, if you add it to the, if you, if we add it to our current code and update it, there's more teeth to it, cause that code already exists, and you're allowed to update and change it as it goes, amend it, I should say. So I think that just gives you a better base to stand on, rather than just throw out a whole new one. And he's right, some lawyer will pick, you didn't have this in your code, but you have it here, that's not right, we're not gonna do that, you know, so...
We'll take it back, and we'll...
Yeah, just, just a recommendation.
We'll go back up to item five, Mr. Rock, just gonna give us an update on the police pensions.
Yeah, I wanted just to have kind of an informal discussion here, and then I'll make a formal presentation in the fourth meeting. The pension, unfunded liability on the pension is continuing to increase both as a percentage and as a dollar amount. The accrued unfunded liability's now $4.3 million, 23% funding level. Last year, I'm not exactly what all occurred, but the levy requirement was $256,000, and the village contribution was only $171,000. So I'm not certain where the differential came into play there, and the request to... And the request under the actuarial, actuarial requirement is showing for a funding requirement of $311,000. And that's based upon an assumption of a 5% return, which, where return last year was under 1% with the decrease in interest rates where they've been. So looking at that, in order to make up the difference in the investment return over the next year to the, what is a reasonable 5%, you know, 5% over 30 years is probably a reasonable thing to expect. But over the next five years, six years, it's not. So in addition to the actuarial request of $311,000, also looking for an additional $52,000 to make up for the difference in investment return over the next year for a total levy request of $363,000. Now, I'm going to, as a fiduciary for the pension fund, and maybe this is my quickest way to get not reappointed to the pension board by the village, is that I'll lay out the groundwork as to what we will do, or I assume that my recommendation to the board will be, or the pension board, is that if the funding is not at the actuarial requirement of $311,000 next year, we'll proceed with notifying the state revenue department and follow through on having the differential paid directly from the state into the pension fund. If the additional request of $52,000 isn't covered, then next year's actuarial report will probably be at 4% and not at 5%. And that way, we can make for certain that the actuarial, or the funding of the pension fund is met. Otherwise, this number is going to just continue to grow and grow and grow. And it's going to be at a place, and, you know, we're getting actually not too far off from it, to where the pension funding is going to be more than what the annual salary is for the sworn officers during the year. So it's going to be costing more to cover the retirement plan than it is for the actual police current salary requirements. Now, what is the benefit of the village going then with the levy versus allowing, you know, just putting the pension board in the position of notifying the Department of Revenue, is that the levy requirement, the levy funding is outside of tax caps. So that is funds that will be, would come out of the tax revenue that would come into the levy and wouldn't impact other sources and uses of funds of the village. Where the portion that, if we go to the Department of Revenue, that's going to be funds that you probably were counting on to use for other purposes. And the attorney can probably help me out here. The ability to go to the Rev, to Department of Revenue, that's, I'm going to say, within the last five years.
Yeah, it's brand new.
So that's...
Yeah, let's see if it's even that.
And, and it probably came at about the same time that the levy for pensions came outside of tax caps.
Yeah, I would, I would, it was somewhere around there, but the, you know, the main impetus for it, of course, was the poor condition of all of the funds. That, that was the main reason why they made the statutory amendments that go that way. That's true. I mean, it was... I forgot what you said, you were 71% or something like that?
No, we're at 23%.
Oh, you're only at 23%. Okay, that's, yes, that's got to be correct. I mean, honestly.
And all the other towns that are less than that, that aren't getting threatened with the state, what do they do?
Well, you've got the same problem, but you've got, I mean, 23% is...
Well, I mean, you've got Kankakee that's at like 13%. And they're not going to the state to yank the rest of their revenue out to make that happen, they're working with it.
Yeah.
And I have no problem working with it, but I really don't care for the tone and tenor of, we're going to take you to the state.
Well, yeah.
I've got a fiduciary responsibility to do that.
Well, I do too. I have fiduciary responsibility to citizens of Piattone. And there's a lot of remedies for the pension program, trust me. And none of them are pleasant, but there's a lot of remedies for that. And we know...
No, there's only one remedy, and that's cash going into the fund.
We need to work together, or it's, it's not going to go well for any of us. Just so you know.
You're told to have to remember the levy for the pension fund is not part of the tax caps in Will County or the surrounding counties of Chicago. So, and then to increase it above the 5% levy every year, you have to have a truth and taxation hearing every year to increase the levies above 5% level of the previous year. And last year, they didn't elect to incorporate the appropriate levy so that the money could be captured on the tax levy, because your tax caps, your taxes have all these tax caps that are part of the top, and then the bottom, the pensions are excluded from the levies, the tax capped levy of the county. That's where we get into this tax caps and...
We got, we got an email today from the assistant chief deputy Will County Clerk's office that says, "Beginning with the 2016 levy, this will be a capped fund and will be subject to the limiting rate calculation."
Well, that's why we have our legal already looking at that, because that's not a, that's not a capped fund.
I'm just saying, it's county system.
Am I not correct? The tact...
I'm not going to answer that right now, knowing what they just said. I'm going to find out why, number one, and what.
Yeah, I already sent that to Jim this morning.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I'll send that to...
Now, did you forward that email to him or...
I didn't get his email, because Marcy couldn't send it to me this morning.
I'll send it to both of you.
Yeah, and then...
I'm sure you both get it.
Yeah, I'll get it today. That just came up late this afternoon. Marcy's email wasn't working to get it to me.
Yeah, I'll get it to you. I'll send it tonight before I go home.
Yeah, I get it to Jim and then, you know, because I already asked him a question and email about this.
Yeah, I just don't have good service down here, otherwise I'd do it right now. But I woke upstairs today.
Do you know what percentage of communities throughout the state are in the public?
I have no idea. I mean, the overall status. And what, and recently, the, I'm trying to see, which one of the state pension dropped their interest calculation from 5%. I believe it's from 5% to 4%, or 6 to 5, I can't remember which, which threw that 500, was like a $500 million curve ball at their governor. You know, that was...
For many years, they were using 7% as the projected return, and they had been doing that. And of course, they weren't getting 7%. And that was causing more of the drop. I can't answer part of the question. There are an extremely large number of municipalities that are considerably behind. Now, what we say considerably behind, really, you know, when you're below 50%, that, I don't know where the number goes there, but forgot where they want you to be, 90% or something like that.
Yeah, it's around 90%.
That's where they want you to be. I mean, if you're up over 50, you know, 60, 70% areas, you're not too bad. If you're, you're down below 50, you, you need to really look at it. I have to agree, we do have to look at it from a lot of current perspective. The one good thing about, you know, you're, since you don't have that many officers, I mean, it is true, you know, but we're looking at, what, four in now, I think?
Yep.
Yeah, and then there's five actively vested and three not. And I don't know how close those five are to retirement or...
We probably have about an eight to 10-year window for the next retirement.
See, now, that's a lot, that's a lot better than a lot of municipalities that are faced with a much larger number and a lot more going out, you know, all the, all the time. So you're, you know, the pressure on your fund is...
The cash pressure isn't necessary.
Yeah.
But the, but the investment requirement, I mean, it's not like somebody who's sitting back and not worrying about retirement until age 60. You know, "I need to put some money aside in order to retire." And that's kind of too late by that time to, to start saying, "I'm going to put 20% of my salary away." You missed a lot of opportunity a long time ago to start building that nest egg for retirement.
Are any of these communities generating 4% and 5% return on the investment?
No. I'm just, put in the news in their I'm newsletter that they weren't meeting the 5% level, but see, they can make up the difference with each bill they send them, municipalities that are part of I'm.
The other aspect is until we get $2.5 million in the fund, we're very restricted on what we can invest in. So once you get over $2.5 million, then you can be a little bit more aggressive in your investments. But we're only at, what, a million two? So we got a ways to go before we can, right now, as we can be at 10% in the stock market. And actually, we're slightly over 10%, only because the investment, the stock portfolio of the mutual fund we're in has grown at a faster rate than what the, the overall fund has grown. I think we're at 11, 12%.
I'm roughly, which is a diversified investment for all the towns and counties. And I want to say that they thought their investment return on all their investments was about 2% last year. And they have, they were, they were investing in everything.
Yeah, they've got...
They've got several hundred million to play with, and the year wasn't good on investments.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments for Mr. Rock?
Well, let's just try to work together.
Yeah.
Find past it.
You're sticking around for the board members for full update.
Yes.
Thanks, David. Any general discussion? Any of the trustees? We'll go back up to item five, Mr. Rock. He's going to give us an update on the police pensions.
Yeah, I want to just have kind of an informal discussion here, and then I'll make a formal presentation in the fourth meeting. The pension, unfunded liability on the pension is continuing to increase both as a percentage and as a dollar amount. The accrued unfunded liability is now $4.3 million, 23% funding level. Last year, I'm not exactly what all occurred, but the levy requirement was $256,000 and the village contribution was only $171,000. So I'm not certain where the differential came into play there. And the request under the actuarial, actuarial requirement is showing for a funding requirement of $311,000. And that's based upon an assumption of a 5% return, which where return last year was under 1% with the decrease in interest rates where they've been. So looking at that, in order to make up the difference in the investment return over the next year to the, what is a reasonable 5%, you know, 5% over 30 years is probably a reasonable thing to expect. But over the next five years, six years, it's not. So in addition to the actuarial request of $311,000, also looking for an additional $52,000 to make up for the difference in investment return over the next year for a total levy request of $363,000. Now, I'm going to, as a fiduciary for the pension fund, and maybe this is my quickest way to get not reappointed to the pension board by the village, is that I'll lay out the groundwork as to what we will do, or I assume that my recommendation to the board will be, or the pension board, is that if the funding is not at the actuarial requirement of $311,000 next year, we'll proceed with notifying the state revenue department and follow through on having the differential paid directly from the state into the pension fund. If the additional request of $52,000 isn't covered, then next year's actuarial report will probably be at 4% and not at 5%. And that way, we can make for certain that the actuarial, or the funding of the pension fund is met. Otherwise, this number is going to just continue to grow and grow and grow. And it's going to be at a place, and, you know, we're getting actually not too far off from it, to where the pension funding is going to be more than what the annual salary is for the sworn officers during the year. So it's going to be costing more to cover the retirement plan than it is for the actual police current salary requirements. Now, what is the benefit of the village going then with the levy versus allowing, you know, just putting the pension board in the position of notifying the Department of Revenue, is that the levy requirement, the levy funding is outside of tax caps? So that is funds that will be, would come out of the tax revenue that would come into the levy and wouldn't impact other sources and uses of funds of the village. Where the portion that, if we go to the Department of Revenue, that's going to be funds that you probably were counting on to use for other purposes. And the attorney can probably help me out here. The ability to go to the Rev, to the Department of Revenue, that's, I'm going to say, within the last five years.
Yeah, it's brand new.
So that's...
Yeah, let's see if it's even that.
And it probably came at about the same time that the levy for pensions came outside of tax caps.
Yeah, I would, I would, it was somewhere around there, but the, you know, the main impetus for it, of course, was the poor condition of all of the funds. That, that was the main reason why they made the statutory amendments that go that way. That's true. I mean, it was...
I forgot what you said, you were 71% or something like that?
No, we're at 23%.
Oh, you're only at 23%. Okay, that's, yes, that's got to be correct. I mean, honestly.
And all the other towns that are less than that, that aren't getting threatened with the state, what do they do?
Well, you've got the same problem, but you've got, I mean, 23% is...
Well, I mean, you've got Kankakee that's at like 13%. And they're not going to the state to yank the rest of their revenue out to make that happen, they're working with it.
Yeah.
And I have no problem working with it, but I really don't care for the tone and tenor of, "We're going to take you to the state."
Well, yeah.
I've got a fiduciary responsibility to do that.
Well, I do too. I have fiduciary responsibility to citizens of Piattone. And there's a lot of remedies for the pension program, trust me. And none of them are pleasant, but there's a lot of remedies for that. And we know...
No, there's only one remedy, and that's cash going into the fund.
We need to work together, or it's, it's not going to go well for any of us. Just so you know. know.
I just don't think the signs, but trustee marches, I'm sorry, trustee Jones, that's, that's a pretty good idea too.
Is that mostly used in more crime-ridden areas?
Pretty much.
Yeah, we're, it's not like we're, like I said, it's not like we're crime-ridden, we're not. Our crime is almost invisible.
But when it does happen, you want it to stay out there.
But right, but when it's out there, we should, somebody should know, you know, or quiet rumors, put a, you know, any rumors that are going out about anything, put something out there to quiet them down, you know, that, no, you don't have to be worried about everything. It's, it's okay, it's.
That's something we can talk with chief about. Any other general discussion? If not, we'll talk to him.
Get a couple of these.
You're in the hot seat, chief.
I had, I just read this and we were discussing this a little bit about having some type of a crime alerts for the residents of Piattom. You know, we got very little crime to report here, which is great, but when something more than the usual shoplifting or neighbor complaints happen, residents should have a right to know what's going on or be notified. We got at our disposal five different types of social media outlets to notify the public. One recent occurrence happened on August 10th, the armed street robberies, which were mentioned in the Daily Journal and the Piattom Vidette Facebook page and newspaper. We shouldn't have to find out days or weeks later, it should be the responsibility of the police department so that it could accurately, accurately information be put out accurately. Something needs to be done to better inform our residents, so no matter what. And I just want to start a conversation just to try to get something, some kind of a plan in effect. And the social media sites that are available are the police department, Piattom Police Department, the Village of Piattom, Piattom, Village of Piattom mobile app and WPAL. I've also spoke with WPAL and they said they would post crime alerts or watches if requested.
Well, in reference to any event that occurred in September that you're talking about.
August.
Yes, August, now it's whatever month this is. I will say that the police department will discreetly, I say discreetly, notify the public if we feel a concern of safety. And the events that occurred on that date will still be my discretionary, what I think needs to be released to the public, because fighting rumors is no way, it's, there's some privacy things and there's some things going on in the police world that we're not subject to discussion with anybody about. So I can, I spoke to the press agencies that contacted me about it and they respected the opinion that was released, but I'm not going to even comment on rumors or trying to keep the board updated on the day-to-day activities because if you don't have confidence in me to oversee the public safety of the community, then we need to have a closed door and discuss it because.
And that's not the question.
The public needs to know certain things.
Right.
But certain things they don't need to know.
Exactly.
Until the time comes for it to be known. There's a lot of things going on, people believe, they, they assume, I can't deal in those assumptions when I'm investigating a matter that is utmost important, but it has to be discreetly handled. And that's just the way it has to be. And I've told this board from day one, you know, that there's things I need to let you know, you'll be the first to know in the email world, but there's some things that, you know, based on the circumstances that were going on that night, there was way, way involved and a lot of things going on. I'm not going to even try to go on to the social media to try to hear comments and everybody's opinions on what occurred because it's a keyboard discussion. I feel, you know, the newspapers of the area contacted me because social media contacted them, but I'm not going to ever take a position to use social media for some issues that are alerts, that's fine, but they, you know, you have to, like I said, I'm, I'm the one working 24/7 and keep awake, worrying about the community all the time. Because that's my job. And so you have to have confidence that we'll take care of things and do the job the need gets done and let the public know because all the people that come up to me want to know more than I'm going to tell them and it's just part of life. You know, they say, well, how come? I said, because we're handling it and we're not releasing any information, period. And that's just the way it is. And if you're in a position that someone you know was involved in those situations, you exactly want us to do our job that way.
Any other general discussion? If not a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Halliday.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Pate?
Yes.
Yes. My guy.
The muster guy.
Yeah, yeah.
Try.